Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Gurnett.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Please rise for the pleasure invocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since I read most of the things on the agenda except for I'm giving the invocation today, I missed that, but anyway, I just, we've got the, we've got a little rain going on right now, but we have an interesting summer coming up with Native Omaha Days and a number of other things that will be going on, a number of street name changes that are going to be going on, and we're going to continue to be moving our city forward. So with that, just continue to pray for our city and pray for the work that we do on the council. Thank you.
City Clerk certify publication of daily record on the official news paper of Omaha on April 3rd, notice for repeat council and regular city council meeting April 7, 2015, a current copy of Meeting Acts post new white binder on the east of all the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only attract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or muting electronic devices.
Zoning ordinance on final ring planning board attachment, item five through seven or one case, five is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of I-8, 680 and Irvington Road from Development Reserve District to General Industrial District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is resolution of the plat entitled Seaton Industrial Park Lot 2 is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is subdivision agreement with Warehouse 51 is hereby approved.
Public carions on numbers five, six, and seven are today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public carions closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through seven are passed, seven to zero. Next cases eight to 10. Eight is ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 19th and Locust Streets from R-7 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District and General Commercial District to R-5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is resolution of preliminary plat entitled Locust Glen is hereby approved with a waiver of lot depth. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that the replat transmitted herewith entitled Locust Glen is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carions on numbers eight, nine, and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Wayne with the City of Omaha Planning Department. I'm just here to answer any questions if there are, if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public carions closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight through 10 are passed, seven to zero. Next cases 11 through 16. Eleven is ordinance to rezone property located south of 37th and Maple Street intersection from R-4, 35 Single Family Residential District, High Density, R-5 Urban Family Residential District and R-5, 35 Urban Family Residential District to R-5 Urban Family Residential District. Twelve is ordinance to rezone to R-6 Low Density Multifamily Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Thirteen is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district to approve the development plan, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Fourteen is the preliminary plat entitled Adams Park along with attached conditions is accepted in preparation final plat is authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And fifteen is the plat transmitted herewith entitled Adams Park is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And sixteen is resolution subdivision agreement with Holy Name Housing Corporation is hereby approved.
Public carions on items 11 through 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kalner, TD2, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Available to answer any questions if you have any.
You have a lot of items today. Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents?
Just a second, I think.
Okay. Proponents?
There are no proponents. I'll wait. What? They're confused. Okay.
Mr. Name and address there for the record.
My name is Raymond Givens, Olivia 2012 North 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. The Adams Park is right behind my property, and I've got two notices about they want to build a church there. They want to build a church there, and I'm coming here to find out what's going on. And I've got one from the park and, no, two from the park, and way the Adams Park is, what they're doing, all that development and putting in them sewers, we right there, they right in the, they right in the back of my lot. So we're coming here to find out what's, what to do.
Okay. I think we could help get some questions answered for you hopefully today. Before we do though, I'll ask for any additional proponents that want to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Why don't you say a prayer here for a minute, just a second. I'll just have a seat.
I'll come back to you here in a minute. Any opponents today?
Just have a seat.
Public carions closed. Mr. Gray, you want to?
Let me, let's see if we can get his question answered first, and then I'll, I have a comment.
Please, go ahead.
Well, I guess this is part of a planned unit development.
Your, your name, please.
Doug Kalner, TD2, 10836 Old Mill Road. We're doing a planned unit development as part of, part of a senior living type of development for seniors. There's no church. It is included as part of the church. The plating includes part of the church to the south to consolidate some of their lots that they had with the railroad right away.
Are you taking his property? Yeah. Is there a diagram or something you can show?
There should be, but I did not bring one.
Okay. So it's a senior living facility, though?
I think we have one.
Not a church. Perhaps we have one from the planning director here you can use? Yeah.
This is Maple Street up in this area. The church, the existing church is down here. This is their existing parking lot. The limits of the plat are around that parking lot, sectioning the church property off. And then there's an additional lot to the north that's going to be, it's a single lot, but it's going to be for individual townhomes. This drawing doesn't show the townhomes on there, but that's, that's what's happening in this location.
Does that sufficiently answer some of your questions there? Or do you want?
Where's his property?
Where's your property on this diagram, or if you want to point that out?
I don't think he has any.
This would be, this is the street to the south. This is, this is Corby Street here. This is Maple Street here.
That's Maple. Okay, we own Ohio. We own Ohio.
Ohio is the street to the south. Yeah. So you're down here, so you're probably on the south side of, of the church.
Of the church.
So the church is here, so you're down here. The access for Maple is coming off up here. But you would be, you must be within the 300-foot radius of this property.
Yeah, yeah. Because you can stand on my property and see the church.
Right. To the north of you.
Yep, to the north.
Okay. So you're down in this location, somewhere along here.
Yeah, then I'm all right.
You're all right.
So it'd be accurate to say it does not affect his property. He just received notice because it was close by, right? Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity, you can, you can have a seat now and then. I just wanted to make a comment and tell, talk about Holy Family Housing and the continued work that they do in, in, in our community. I don't know if anybody has had the opportunity to look at some of the drawings of what they're, what's planning to go there. It's a senior facility and I think it's, it's a really good project, and it's another in a long line of successful projects that Holy Family Housing has done. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, thank the Holy Family Housing and all of you for the work that you do. And also Adams Park is moving right along and, and is probably moving right along because our Parks Director is keeping a close eye on it, but there's some really wonderful things happening in that area. And it wouldn't happen without the collaboration of a number of folks, including our, our Parks Director and others. And so thank you for this effort. It continues to build on what we're attempting to do to turn North Omaha around into a, into a more viable neighborhood, and, and, and this is another effort to do that. So thanks to everyone involved in that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
11 through 16 are passed, seven to zero. Next case is 17 through 21. Seventeen is ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 40th and Pacific Streets from R-6 Low Density Multifamily Residential District and General Industrial District to R-5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eighteen is ordinance to adopt a PK Parking Overlay District to approve a parking plan, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nineteen is resolution of preliminary plat entitled Marcy Edition along with attached conditions is accepted in the preparation final plat is authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Twenty is resolution that the replat transmitted herewith entitled Marcy Edition is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And twenty-one is resolution subdivision agreement with the University of Nebraska Board of Regents is hereby approved.
Public carions on items number 17 through 21 are today. Proponents, please.
John Coolidge with Lampre Newson and Associates, 14710 West Dodge Road. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm here today to talk to you about the UNMC project located on the south side of Leavenworth that included the old Kiwitt site and associated block to the north as well as the Villalobos to the east. So this project is here for preliminary and final plat as well as rezoning from GI and R-6 to R-5 with a PK overlay, so the existing zoning. When UNMC inherited this, purchased this property, it was in a pretty dilapidated condition other than the Kiwitt site. It had been used primary, primarily for storage and, and materials handling, so it was in very rough condition. UNMC approached the city on the best way to accommodate parking, and we talked about the present zoning, and that's why we're here today. So the site included extensive landscaping as well as the construction of the two parking lots. The construction of the parking lots has begun, the and is almost completed. The trail is a piece to connect the Field Club Trail with 40th Street is a piece that's missing, as well as the Mason Street reconstruction. Those two items are under contract and will be constructed as soon as we have public approval of the plat. So again, the site was in pretty rough condition. We've constructed most of the parking lot. This was taken last fall before the installation of the landscaping, but we've installed major landscaping. The skate park that was here has been removed as well as the, a pretty rough condition adjacent to these homes. We think it's a typical UNMC, nice addition to the neighborhood, and we're here today to ask your approval for these measures.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Please come down.
I'm not really, I'll go beside this question.
Okay.
My name is Roxanne Roach. I live right within 300 yards on 38th and Pacific, 1022 South 38th Avenue. And right now, my backyard is just right abutted to the, the new parking lot that they put in, and it's very nice. There are issues that I have experienced in the last construction. My whole house shook and, and it's kind of crooked now and everything, and I just wanted to know if they were going to, you know, do a lot of blasting of cement like they did in the past, and if they can let us know so we can be prepared for that trauma. And also, right now, it's created an echo chamber since they took out all the trees by my house. I have no privacy, and I can hear things from three blocks away. So if they, whatever they could do to add, you know, landscaping or whatever to make, make it more private in my home the way it was when I bought it 20 years ago would be great. I didn't really know that I was going to be living in an industrial area when I bought it. I can't afford to buy a new home, and I just have a lot of problems with that aspect of it. I know it's really beautiful to people that like cement, and I know that it's going to help people, you know, to have cancer because they need these parking places. But if there's anything that they could do to add more of an aesthetic appeal to it as a neighborhood, because there are still people living right next to it, I would appreciate that and be considered and notified when they're doing construction because I don't work every day anymore, and I am home to experience it.
Thank you. Perhaps Mr. Coolidge can help us address most questions here in a minute. Any other opponents today? See none, public carions closed. Mr. Jerem, Minister.
Yes, there is a person that I can help connect you to on the landscaping aspect of this project so that, and also questions in terms of giving you information and insights as to what will be going on in the future there. So I'd be happy to do that. In fact, I do have your name and address, and I will give that to the contact that I have at the Med Center and ask that they reach out to you. There was a committee formed by the Med Center that did outreach to the Field Club Neighborhood North Neighborhood Association, Field Club Homeowners League, and the Thornburg Place Neighborhood, which would be right around the, and to the west of this property. And they had a number of meetings over several months, and I guess, I don't know if you were notified of those or were able to participate in them, but there were a number of people who had input and insight into the landscaping. And so what you see is actually a reflection of what that kind of neighborhood committee came up with, but it doesn't mean that there may not be other enhancements that, that could be made to help improve your condition. So we'll look into that. The question I have, though, is that there was, the neighborhoods expressed desire to connect the old Villalobos trucking facility that was to the west of your property into the east of the trail where Mr. Villalobos worked, had, I think it was semis that transported dirt and so forth, and he worked on his trucks there. But that's become a parking lot, and they, the neighborhoods asked that there be connectivity for Mason to the lot and then from the lot to the Field Club Trail to promote people who want to have a more active life and walk to and from the Med Center if they're capable of doing that rather than catching the shuttle that'll be there. And I noticed on the, on what you brought up, Mr. Coolidge, there was connection from the west to the, on the west side of the trail but not to the east side. It's my understanding that there was some actual denial of that by the Parks Department, which kind of confused me. So do you want to kind of address that one issue for me?
Sure. We are, there's approximately 20 feet of grade change or 15 at least from this Villalobos parking lot and to, to the existing trail, and so you can't make a, you can't do it with an accessible straight shot through there. So we coordinated with the Parks Department and talked about stairs and other items, and they said stairs were absolutely out. So we came up with a sort of a serpentine or switchback route that, that got you down with the 5% route. We presented that to the Parks Department, and they, they had a couple comments that said it would be very difficult to maintain, that when that construction was done, the slope would be very difficult to maintain afterwards in terms of between the sidewalks, there would be three to ones, and that would be difficult to maintain. And their second item was that there's no existing sidewalks on Mason Street up to 38th Street, and so connection, so they didn't believe it provided connectivity to the neighborhood. That was a particular Dennis Breyer's take from Parks Department. We chose not to, at this time, we haven't pursued it any farther, I guess, and so that's what I know about that.
And I would just ask Mr. Bench, are you behind?
Bench, Parks Director.
So my understanding of Mason on the east side of the trail is it was just really basically a street that serviced a garage or two of properties on 38th Avenue as well as was the main, one of the main entrances to the Villa, what was formerly the Villalobos business, because the structure that was on the premises was immediately to the south of Mason Street, since been removed, of course, because there's a parking lot. But would you, would you want to weigh in on the Parks Department? I mean, we do have these zigzag or serpentine ramps. In fact, there's one just up at Woolworth Avenue for access for people there. Why were, why was your department opposed to this one?
You know, I would have to get with Mr. Breyers to find out. I am not that familiar with this project, so I would have to touch base with Dennis, and I can get back to you.
Okay. Well, it seems as though to me that maybe we could lay this over for a meeting and get those answers because it wasn't just one, it was three neighborhoods who all asked for the same thing. And, you know, we have a plan here that's been produced that doesn't reflect what I think they thought their understanding would be. We do have this need to see if there's some additional landscaping that can be to the west of 1022 South 38th Avenue, so I'd like to see those, and I'd request.
Point one week.
One week layover.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
17 through 21 are laid over one week. Resolutions of preliminary plats, item 22, resolution of preliminary plat entitled Highland 75 North, located generally north of Parker Street and south of Grant Street, east of 32nd Street, and west of North Freeway along attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carion number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Wieland, 8712 West Dodge Road, on behalf of the applicant, Bridge Shore Development. Today, we have Othello Meadows here, Executive Director of 75 North to speak a little bit, and Todd Lieberman from Bridge Shore.
Thank you.
Afternoon. Othello Meadows, 4927 Miami Street. As many of you know, this is a project that we've been working on for quite some time and are eager to have before you for the first time. In a nutshell, the pillars of this, this project are really three things. Mixed income housing, high-quality mixed income housing, a really strong focus on credit to college educational, credit to college educational pipeline, which last night we were fortunate enough to get unanimous vote of approval from the, the school board. And the third piece is community wellness and bringing in partners to the neighborhood, excuse me, to, to increase the quality of life for neighborhood residents. We've done a great deal of engagement with neighbors, with community associations, with neighborhood associations to make sure that the wishes and the desires of the community have been heard. In essence, we've built this project on 10 years of community engagement that was started by the empowerment network, and we've kind of taken the ball and run with it, and hopefully we'll be in the ground in October, November and start to bring all that planning and all that engagement to life. So I'm here to answer any questions. Also here is Todd Lieberman from Bridge Shore Development, which is our development partner, as well as Terry Moore from Earhart Griffin, which is our engineering firm. So we'd be glad to take any questions you might have for us at this time.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Public carions closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd just like to thank the, Othello and the group for continuing to do this, this very necessary work on 30th Street. And I think, I guess my only question is, any, any date yet or certain or close that you're going to break ground and do some grading or some, to see some activity going on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The shovel's in the ground. That's, that's what we're all waiting for. So tenorly scheduled for October, November of this year. The first phase is completely funded. We're ready to go.
That's good news to hear. And the other, the other thing I'll say to you, Othello, I think there's a, a family in the back, I believe it is, that they have some, James and, James and Gloria Moore, they're sitting in the back if, if, after the vote here today, if you could stop by and talk to them, they have property that's near that area.
Absolutely.
Just give them an idea of kind of what, what's, what the plans are and what the plans look like as much as you can.
Be glad to do so.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the continued work to, to make this happen. This is, this is going to be a great project and a great boost for 30th Street and North Omaha.
Trust me, it's a labor of love, so thank you.
I'd like to thank you too. Speaking of progress in North Omaha, I mean, this is literally across the block from our recent concerns of violence and a great example of the long-term solution, I think, to strong neighborhoods and ending the cycle of poverty and unemployment in the community that we addressed for hours last week. And I think this is a great example of how partnerships can work to address that situation. And as a proud graduate of third grade at Howard Kennedy School, congratulations on your unanimous vote yesterday.
Thank you.
It's great to see that incorporated into this plan too. I think that's a key component.
It's the most vital component, actually. It really is. So I've aged a little bit in that process, but yesterday was, was a great moment because I think it, it really is a testament to people choosing kids over politics, over anything else. So we're excited. We think that that signals that all these pieces are falling into place. And so, like I said, we're really ready to go.
So I only have two questions for you at this point. The first one is, how quickly can we make this happen? And the second one, second question is, is the city doing enough to assist you in this effort, whether that be process or zoning issues as we talk about today, or even funding issues or community development block grants considerations? Anything we should be doing more to help this come to fruition?
Well, I'd be remiss to say that, you know, we couldn't use more money. I mean, I wouldn't stand up here and say that, but I do have to say that the planning department has been phenomenal. They've been with us really from the first time we introduced this concept to them and the first meetings we had, they've been supportive from the moment we, we, we ran it by them. So we've worked pretty much hand to hand with them along this whole process to make sure that, you know, we were dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and they've been phenomenal. We haven't had any roadblocks and have actually had nothing but support from, from the planning department. The mayor's office has been supportive and has, has opened doors for us and created some access to, to other funds that we hadn't seen before. So the city has been a phenomenal partner in this process.
Great. Well, the extent, to the extent you apply for something like that, I'd be supportive of helping with that situation. I think to the extent we can focus resources on a major accomplishment like this is an effective way to use those resources rather than spread out in many different areas that sometimes don't produce the results we want to see.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Othello, I just wanted to let you know that I'm proud that the Men for Others concept that you learned in high school, that you're taking it into adulthood and remembering your teaching that you learned. I'm real proud of what you've turned out to be.
Well, I appreciate it. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Thompson was my counselor when I was at prep, and, and I won't say I was an angel all the time, but he, he never forgot and never, never gave up on me. So I appreciate your support, and I have, I have remembered those lessons. Thank you.
You bet.
And he still turned out okay, right?
Even, even Mr. Thompson about, I, you know, I made it.
Mr. Gray.
My only other comment, Othello, is if you're going to age, this is the way to do it. Trust me from experience. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.[1768.58]
Thank you, guys.
Preliminary plat entitled N M Place, located southeast of Forty-fourth and Farner Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number twenty-three is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is adopted, seven to zero. Item number twenty-four, resolution of preliminary plat entitled Greenshu, located south of Blair High Road and Interstate six-eighty, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number twenty-four is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-four is adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number twenty-five, The Verdict Bar and Grill, nineteen-oh-one Harney Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing number twenty-five is today. Are there any proponents?
Charles Adams, Pearl Six, Washington, Waterloo, Nebraska.
Eric Swenson, five-one-six-two Jones Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Jim Cow, five-one-six-two Jones Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-five is adopted, seven to zero.
Thanks very much.
Item, item number twenty-six, Eagle Run West Golf Course, TBA Champions Run, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-zero-zero, Eagle Run Drive, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. This is an annexation. There is a communication supporting.
Public hearing number twenty-six is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, everyone. Sam Nasir, eighty-nine, North Hundred Twenty-fourth Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Shawna Johnson, one-four-zero-one Savannah Drive in Papillion, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton.
Welcome, welcome to District Seven. I know that being annexed, there was a lot that you needed to do and learn and figure out with the extra restaurant tax that we've talked about, and then getting this new liquor license, and I'm just really glad you were able to get that in under, under the gun, because I was getting some, some calls, all that. I think there were a number of people that thought maybe they could just get free, free beer for a while, but you, you made it in in the nick of time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And, and I, I am glad that you, that you are, that you have been annexed and are part of the district and part of the city of Omaha now, because.
We're glad, too.
Yeah, with the Cox Classic and, and the things that go on, so many fundraisers go on at Champions, and I'm just really glad that, that you are a part of the city, so.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I motion to approve.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton.
Yes.
Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is adopted, six to zero, or seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-seven, Southwest Fantasies, one-hundred-and-forty-three-thirty Hillsdale Avenue, package liquor license, new application, old location. This is an annexation.
Public hearing number twenty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Mike Schromick, eighty-nine-thirty South Hundred Thirty-seventh Circle, number two, appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven is adopted, seven to zero. We'll take items twenty-eight and twenty-nine together, the same applicant. Speedy Mart, number twenty-seven-sixty-one at fifty-two-oh-five South Seventy-second Street, package liquor license, new application, old location. And twenty-nine is Speedy Mart, twenty-seven-sixty-two, at one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-twenty Manderson Circle, package liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearings on number twenty-eight and twenty-nine are today. Are there any proponents?
Greg McNeil, eighty-four-hundred-I Street, Omaha, Nebraska, western nor.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine are adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty, Soho Lounge at two-two-two-two-two-six North Hundred Fourteenth Street, request permission to, for a change of location of the present Class C liquor license to one-hundred-and-twenty-one-forty-three West Center Road, Suite Thirty-eight.
Public hearing number thirtieth is today. Proponents, please.
What did you say?
Proponents, if you're in favor, just your name and address first.
Move over to the mic, right there.
Quid your kind, one-five-eight-one Manderson Street.
Thank you.
Catherine Ma, one, one-five-zero-one Manderson Street, too.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thirty-one is Petro's Restaurant, fifty-nine-fourteenth Center Street, request permission for an addition to the present Class I liquor license of an outdoor patio area approximately eighty-five by twenty-six to the west.
Public hearing number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Nick Petro, one-nine-four-zero-seven Hamilton Circle, Oakwood, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Nick, you have the best, the best desserts in town, bar nut.
Thank you very much.
Just, it's great eating there.
Well, come have some on the patio.
All right.
There's a motion. And a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll take items thirty-two and thirty-three. They're both two Keno, satellite Keno locations. Thirty-two is a resolution that Big Red has granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at ninety-five-twenty-three-twenty-five Q Street, Keebler's Bar and Grill, and thirty-three is for Stoli's Lounge at seven-fifteen North Hundred Twenty Street.
Public hearings on number thirty-two and thirty-three are today. Proponents, please. Ms. Coffey.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at one-one-two-four-eighth John Colle Boulevard, and I'm here to ask for approval for these two Keno locations.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-two and thirty-three are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an app placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order. For the consent agenda ordinances we're removing, item number thirty-nine.
Public hearings on agenda items number thirty-four through thirty-eight, and forty and forty-one were held on March thirty-first. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-fourth through thirty-eight, and forty and forty-one are passed, seven to zero. Item thirty-nine is ordered to accept the bid of Lincoln Guard Security Company to provide security services at various city facilities.
Public hearing was held. Mr. Gray, do you have comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. First, this, this, I have some concerns, to be honest with you, about the bid and if you're going to be able to perform that service. And I guess I just wanted to hear from you what your feelings are about, and I know you made the bid and you won this, won the successful bid, but my concern is the kind of the lowness of the bid and the difference between your bid and all of the other bids, which were substantially, well, I won't say substantially, but quite a bit higher than yours. And just wanted to get some comments from you on that. The other thing I wanted to know, too, is are you going to hire locally, or are you going, are you bringing people in from Lincoln? Just how are you going to do that?
Okay, excellent question. So for the record, I'm Yannis Strout-Collins. I'm the President of Security and Protection Services Incorporated, and then our DBA name is Lincoln Guard Security Company. So that's the correlation there.
Okay.
Couple extra, or a couple excellent questions there. This isn't our first rodeo. We've been in business for over twenty years. I think it's very important to note that we're a city contractor for Lincoln. We provide security for the public libraries in Lincoln. I started the company when I was twenty years old. I've learned a lot in the last twenty-plus years. And to some extent, it surprises me a little bit that, you know, we, you know, free market society, we're, we've, we've been the winning, winning bidder in theory, and we get to this point, and other than defending a low bid, as opposed to a high bid. But nonetheless, specifically in response to your questions, I, I'm aware that there is kind of an acceptable, an accepted standard where, I know there are some unions, even, even with Lincoln and other surrounding communities, where some of the larger agencies, specifically if they're working an off-duty assignment, you know, they don't want to go necessarily spend their Sunday off and, and go work a concert for, you know, ten, fifteen, twelve, you know, they, they want to command a, a certain, a higher dollar amount. I also believe that, well, while that's, that seems to be, that seems to stand true, I try not, I try not to hire individuals to look at working for us from the perspective of, I'm just going to go work this, this little assignment here, make my hundred or two hundred dollars for this weekend, and, and be happy and move on to the next assignment like that. We're trying to attract people who, you know, in some cases, we've got, I know, right now, a couple retirees that we've been talking to. I have actually on my staff a retired Omaha police officer right now. I have a gentleman who has fifteen years of law enforcement experience, who works another full-time job, who actually enjoys, you know, the prospects of some unique, unique employment, similar to what he's done in the past, but.
If I can, let me be a little bit more specific with my question. I, I'm aware of, you know, I went to and looked it up a little bit, and I'm aware that you have the contract to do the libraries in Lincoln. This is, this is a little bit different animal, so to speak, though, because you're talking about recreation centers and swimming pools, and some of those have some rather unique challenges. That's part of the concern that I have. And, and secondly, trying to hire people based on what you say the salary or around that salary is going to be hiring people to work in some of those specific areas where there, where there's going to be a few more challenges. That's what I'm trying to get at with you. Are you, are you hiring, what, what's going to be your hiring procedure, and what, what do you have a, a track record at all of, of having worked in swimming pools and recreation centers before?
Okay. I guess the parallels that I will draw is we're not, we're not new to Omaha, even though it says Lincoln Guard Security Company. We, we are a present security contractor working, for example, we work in the old market, is one example that I'd give. But as far as unique challenges, if you watch the news on challenges with, relating to tailgating and sporting events, concerts, things like Celebrate Lincoln, Frog Fest, it's not new to us. We've been doing this for a long time, and the reason that we're successful is, you know, number one, our hiring practices, we do extensive background checks, both local and national, as well as our training. I, I myself, well, going back about fifteen years ago, we decided that all of our officers needed to become PPCT Defensive Tactics certified, you know, so that you actually have, instead of just throwing someone in a uniform, sending them out someplace, you, they actually have something to base what they're doing on a, on a, on a system that's legally, medically, and tactically acceptable, you know, from dealing with difficult situations. And the only reason I brought that aspect up is, is I wanted to be clear that we didn't just throw a bunch of people in uniform. They actually do have certifications to meet your unique needs. But more, I kind of anticipated, based on, I reviewed the, the council meeting from last, last week. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here, but I reviewed the minutes on the video, and I kind of anticipated some questions about wages and so forth. So this morning, myself and my staff made some phone calls, and we contacted a total of nine agencies within an hour's drive of, of here, some, some really quite close. And I guess without going into immense detail and revealing, you know, my strategies and so forth, I would say, I'm going to argue with those numbers. We have a lot of interest, you know, specifically when we, when we discuss the type of assignments as far as the pools and the outdoor activities and so forth, well within an acceptable wage range to be able to perform what we have bid and make money.
Okay, and you're going to hire, what, what's going to, are you going to hire from here, or you're bringing in people from Lincoln? Just tell me how that's going to.
Well, for example, like I said, I, I have one retired Omaha police officer already on my staff. I have another retired officer from the Lincoln area. I will be bringing some from Lincoln, as well as hiring from the, the surrounding areas. Obviously, I understand the contract does not allow me to hire current Omaha police officers. However, it does leave open, you know, for example, Bellevue, it does leave, does leave open, or Alston, Papillion, La Vista, you know, certainly all your surrounding areas. My understanding is it just can't be a currently employed Omaha police officer. So we've actually, through just this morning's phone calls, we've got such an overwhelming response of people being interested that, quite frankly, we've got more interest than we've got positions to fill. And, you know, I, I haven't been in business this long to make promises and bids that I'm not capable of fulfilling. So, you know, I assure you, if you give me this opportunity, my, my intent is to be here for the long haul. I, I believe we can, we can perform for you.
Okay, let, let me just say for, let me just say, I don't intend to, to vote against you. It's just that I wanted to have some questions answered, and part of the reason for doing that is because we had to, we had to fire a company last year for non-performance, and, and sometimes that can get a little tricky sometimes, especially in some of the areas where we have greater needs, and so.
You know, you just dragged my, my, my mind on something I was going to address pertaining to that. And I was going to bring up the fact that you, you've had some issues with covering, with coverage, not having, arguably perhaps either not having enough with a qualified staff or just not having enough staff altogether. And, and that's one of my concerns altogether, in terms of not just fulfilling my agreement with the city of Omaha, but in general, all of my customers and my ability to grow. If you put yourself in a situation where you don't have enough staff to just manage what you've got, you can't, you can't grow at all. So a tactic that has worked for me quite well in the past and that's allowed me to expand and, and get to this point is, and this is where perhaps you see, you'll see some of my process, is by expanding and, and having the means to have more staff, for example, if I have, you know, twenty people available to cover twenty additional people to what I have now, if I gain a couple, three more accounts, to be able to add those extra twenty people, instead of being a couple, three short, even if I'm five or six long, that means if on Sunday afternoon I get a phone call saying, you know, "Mr. Strout-Collins, I've got an event this afternoon. I didn't realize the contract for this hall said I had to have security. Can you, can you help us out?" Well, my answer needs to be absolutely, instead of looking at my staff going, "How are we going to, how are we going to fill this need?", I need to be able to say, you know, "Yeah, we've got some breathing room. We hired on some extra people to be able to handle, you know, especially now with getting going along, going with Omaha and, and the pools. You know, we're going to need some extra staff." And, and that's where I think it'll, I'm looking at it more as of an, of an opportunity rather than something that's going to make things be harder. I mean, certainly, it'll be a challenge, but, but I'm looking at being able to under-promise and over-deliver, and then, you know, certainly it'll keep you happy, but then, in addition, by having some extra staff, it'll allow me to. but then, in addition, by having some extra staff, uh, it'll allow me to grow even more.
Okay. My final question, though, and like I said, I don't, don't have any intentions of, but I, but I do need to ask those questions because...
Absolutely.
...we have, we, we've gone through this once with someone that, that had to be terminated from the contract. Your diversity, I, I'm, I'm assuming that you're going to have a, you're going to be strongly diverse in terms of individuals, the individuals that you hire.
It'll certainly give us even more opportunity to do that, I think, in the Omaha area, and I'm certainly welcoming that, as well as, uh, and I think it's irrelevant for purposes of this particular bid, uh, that, which is why I didn't pursue it, but, uh, I think we probably, uh, would qualify as, as a small, uh, small business from that perspective, and, uh, certainly, uh, as well as, uh, a lot of other categories, but, uh, nonetheless, it's absolutely something that I'd like to pursue, and I understood there were only, I think, two bidders that were, uh, a small minority qualified. I, I think we meet those requirements, and, and I think by the next time we're in front of you, we'll probably be certified as well, so...
Thank you. I just had to ask those questions because we, we have that concern, and I, I just wanted to hear from you personally.
Sure.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir. When you're in Lincoln right now, you're currently working, is it one security guard per building? What, what's your average?
It really depends on the location, as far as, uh, our requirements where we work with the city. We, we currently just have, uh, one in a couple of different buildings, depending on the requirements, and if there are any, any special events, uh, that could potentially change, but primarily, it's just one. Uh, we work in, uh, other facilities where we have up to four, six, or eight. Uh, I mean, we've worked, uh, locations, like, for example, Eagle Raceway, where we've had up to eight officers and, uh, at one time, or, uh, on a football game day. Certainly, you might have one officer at multiple locations, but they're within, we might have eight locations within, you know, the downtown area. So, we have multiple locations, and then supervisors checking on those locations, uh, and that won't be unlike, uh, unlike here. Uh, you know, you'll also have managers and supervisors checking in and, you know, making sure that, uh, the standards stay high.
Okay. And, um, so, so you're willing to take each location by itself and take into account the special circumstances when you're, when you're manning the places?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, do you have any general idea how many you think you'll be hiring? A minimum of...
I, I think, uh, yeah, specifically for the pools, I, I anticipate that, uh, we, we will probably hire a, a combination of full and part-time, uh, probably, uh, twenty staff total, uh, over the course of the summer. But then I think, uh, what'll happen is, over those, there, there's a twelve-week block where you're extremely busy.
Mm-huh.
Uh, I don't want to hire and then turn around and let people go. I invest a lot of money in their training, so my intentions are to, uh, uh, to get them hired, make sure that we over-deliver over the course of the summer, and then, uh, as we move into the, to the winter season, my hopes are that, uh, we can keep those people on and move them to other, other assignments and, and continue growing, uh, in, in that process.
And then the community centers is a twelve-month, year-round?
Right. Exactly.
The part-timers are more like the, or seasonal would be, uh, the swimming pools?
Right. Right. The, the sounds to me like the, the seasonal would be the pools, and I think, uh, you know, even with law enforcement officers and sworn officers and, and retired officers, there's still some need for training, so, uh, as you might be able to relate, certainly if you're retired from a job, uh, doing drafting, you're probably not doing a whole lot of drafting while you're retired, but, uh, you'd still need to keep up with the, the rules and regulations on that, so, uh, I think we're in a kind of unique position there as well, uh, with being able to instruct and keep those certifications current.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and that gives them, gives, uh, gives some of these, especially if it's a retired officer, a reason to stick around with us, we can help them keep their certifications.
And then my last question, I may not have heard this correctly, but, uh, you were saying that some of the other companies are unionized and you're not? Is that what you were saying?
No, my observation, I guess, it's just kind of an interesting phenomenon I've noticed is, uh, is, and this is, this is more prevalent in bigger cities, and, uh, where you hear this magic twenty-five-dollar-per-hour number, where, boy, we, we have to have that twenty-five an hour. And it's kind of interesting, when you, when you start making those phone calls and, and checking around on what that magic number really is, it, it might be a, an automatic answer, but then when you start explaining a little bit further and say, "Well, this isn't just, this isn't just one concert, this isn't just a single event, this is, we're talking about a part-time job", you know, where you could work, you know, ten or twenty hours a week, and, uh, there'll be certain standards that you have to meet, you'll have to meet our standards, wear our uniform, and, and adhere to our, our policies, and, and help us work through the requirements of a contract, and, you know, when it gets a little bit more interesting, then the reality changes a little bit. Well, it's not, we're not just going out for the Sunday afternoon to make a hundred dollars, we're, this is, this is an ongoing process, so, so suddenly that thought process seems to change just a little bit, depending on who you're talking to. And I think it's, the bigger agencies, uh, they're pretty, pretty stiff on the, it's gotta be the twenty-five, but as you start talking to some of the smaller departments...
It's not a magic number.
It's, it's not really the way it's, I think it's, you've been led to believe to some extent where you have to have that twenty-five, I, I, that's not true.
How long is your contract again?
Uh, I think we have an initial three-year contract.
Three years?
And with an option to renew for a year, three more times of...
Okay. Well, uh, do an excellent job, and perhaps, uh, when, if and when you're renewed, um, maybe we can add a little bit more to it. No, not a promise, but depends on the kind of job you do.
I look forward to being in front of you again.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Gray.
I do have the concerns, um, but I give you a chance, and I'll say yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, it is passed five to two. On the consent agenda for resolutions, we're gonna remove item number fifty-three from the consent agenda.
Public hearings on agenda items number forty-two through fifty-two and fifty-four through fifty-six are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Now, item number fifty-three is resolution, the nomination of Lefern Williams Way as a commemorative street name on Thirty First Street between S and W is hereby approved.
Public hearing number fifty-three is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lefern Williams, a good number of years ago, uh, worked in South Omaha to try and improve the quality of life for those that are impoverished on the lower end of the scale, whether it come to food, clothing, and then sort of branched out to try to get, uh, governmental services enhanced in that area. She worked tirelessly through, for many, many years, and, uh, after her passing, uh, those of you probably do remember, um, on the southwest corner of Thirty First and Q, U Street, Q Street, there was a building erected, and they called it the Lefern Williams Center. And it stood in that way for a good number of years. Well, that building has changed hands, and the name has been removed, and the family wasn't aware of this, and, and they live outstate, and, out of state, I should say, and wanted to make sure that Lefern was still remembered in some way. And, uh, I talked with, what was it? A granddaughter, or great-granddaughter, uh, down in Texas, and we pattered around a, a few ideas, and hence came upon, uh, Thirty First and S to, or S to W Street on South Thirty First, for, we get her name back out there, I mean, having her name on a building, you know, for a long time, so folks could remember. And then, uh, I think the, the term that was used, to me, not, not a Gary Garnett term, but that name was stripped from the building. Uh, and wanted to do something in a, in a, an appropriate way, and, uh, one of the things that I suggested was a commemorative street naming, and we looked at several locations and then wound up, uh, with Thirty First Street between S and W. So, just wanted the folks to remember, because I, I know that I believe, I, that most of the family, uh, out of state, are, were trying to find a way that they could pipe in to this show today, and, uh, I think it was only right to say a few things to remember those that have done quite a bit, uh, in Omaha. Uh, we have commemorative streets, uh, throughout the city, and I think it's, uh, just appropriate, especially the one that was honored, then all of a sudden, it disappeared. It needs to come back, so I make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be very brief, but, Mr. Garnett, I can tell you for sure that there are a significant number of African-American women who can tell you in very vivid detail, including the one at my house, that can talk to you in very, very specific detail about the, the exploits and the work that was done by Lefern Williams, and, um, it, there is no question but that she should be remembered in some way, and, and I think this is a, a, a fantastic way to do it, and you have a thousand percent support from, from me, uh, and, and others who...
I had another idea, too, if I could...
Well, don't, we, we, let's take one at a time. But, uh, I, I, Lefern Williams was, was one of those that, that did a lot, especially for African-American women, and, uh, and a number of them remember her and are following in her footsteps even to this day. So, thank you for that, and my full support for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Much like Ben, um, my wife also was impacted, and in fact, she was the director over there when it was the Lefern Williams Center, and so I, I thank you for remembering the family and remembering all that, that she did for the community, and I appreciate what you're doing, sir.
Thank you. Motion to second? Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-three is adopted, seven to zero. Uh, ordinance on final reading, item fifty-seven, special ordinance laying special tax for, uh, sidewalks, group number SWR two thousand fourteen dash oh-one, we have an amendment.
Public hearing was held on March thirty-first.
Move the amendment.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty-seven is passed as amended, seven to zero. Item number fifty-eight, ordinance on second reading, is ordinance to amend chapter forty-three, building, to add a new article ten to provide for licensing and regulation of boarding and rooming houses, and a new article eleven to provide for licensing and regulation of bed and breakfast in tourist-rooming properties. We have an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing on number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council. Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director for City of Omaha. Um, the ordinance you have in front of you today actually started on December twenty-third of two thousand fourteen. Uh, as you may remember, we had a tragedy in a boarding house in South Omaha, uh, syndrome, I don't know where that came from. Chief Bernie Kanger and I started to have a conversation almost immediately, the day before Christmas, about changes we need to make, uh, and how we can make those changes to, to help us identify and properly, uh, put, put a boarding house or a rooming house situation into a safe environment for us. One that we can look at as first responders and public safety officials, to make sure that there's a minimum level of safety met for all the tenants of these properties. The picture that's up in front of you is not that property. This is actually another property, and the reason I put this photograph up here is that if you were an inspector and you drove by, you would most likely assume that this is just a single-family residential property. The problem is, approximately thirty days later, fire crews were called to this home because somebody had thrown incendiary devices into a bedroom, and we discovered then this was a boarding house. I don't remember how many occupants we had totally, but they were charged four hundred and fifty dollars apiece to stay in a room that was divided by sheets and curtains. That's a problem to us. As happened in the South Omaha fire, what happened simply was, the people were living in a basement with no, without proper regress. They were living in rooms that were built out of plywood, which is not a very good fire-resistant property. So, the ordinance that we created was based on a number of communities across the country we looked at to see what was going on. We based it on the building codes, and we based it on the fire codes. We took the minimum we could, we felt that we could get to and live with, without going overboard on those ordinances, to create a minimum public safety environment for those who have to live in these properties. And sadly, there are people who have to live in these properties. They cannot afford to live in apartments elsewhere in the city. We understand the need for that. We also understand very deeply the emotional scars that these properties tend to leave, not only on the people who were involved, but the first responders, and as you guys heard me, heard, heard me say earlier, even myself. Uh, these are phone calls that none of us like to get, and, and when you're in charge of the Building Division for the City of Omaha, or you're in charge of the Fire Division, and all the first responders who go there, you start to get personal with this. Last year was a very telling year for me. It was very difficult because of a couple of incidents, one on each end of the, of the year. And those of you that know me know that I'm more about public safety and giving you a safe place to live, work, and play than I really am about other issues. I probably put that in forefront of my own family at some times. You've also all heard me say we do stupid things, including myself. There's truth in that. So, that's when we have to start to look at, what can we do within the codes to get a minimum standard met, keeping in mind a minimum standard is not the best thing in the world, but it's the, it's the least thing that you can do to build a legal building. That's what we came up with in this ordinance. Battalion Chief Tim McCaw is here as well, I think he's gonna speak. Uh, we work very closely with the Fire Department, and we've actually developed an entirely new relationship between the Building and Development Division and the Fire Department to move through these things. For me, it's kind of fun, and for them, they wish I'd go away. No, not really. So, we work together on it. So, the, the ordinance you have in front of you deals with boarding house, rooming house, the amendment of the whole changed it to go to bed and breakfast because it's, that's another type of facility we have to be concerned about, uh, as we move forward. So, I'll let Battalion Chief McCaw speak, and I'll be here for any questions you may have afterwards.
Thank you. Exproponent, please.
Tim McCaw, Omaha Fire Department Battalion Chief in Charge of Fire Prevention. Members of the City Council, good afternoon. As the Chief in Charge of Fire Prevention, it is my belief that the safety provided to the citizens of Omaha through our inspection and prevention programs is one of the most critical services we perform as a department. One of the biggest issues that we face with regard to performing our inspection activities is the ability to identify and locate structures that would be considered boarding and rooming houses, so that they, so that we may enforce any applicable codes in the interest of public safety. Oftentimes, these types, excuse me, oftentimes, these types of occupancies are not easily identified based on an outside visual observation. For example, single-family dwellings that have been altered or modified into multiple sleeping and living quarters without securing the proper permits, making for a maze-like configuration. This can make firefighting and search and rescue efforts difficult, as it seems more often than not, these occupancies are not in compliance with current building and fire codes. The ordinance being discussed today provides for a mechanism to be put into place to not only identify these types of occupancies, but to also place them on a registry where they can be inspected yearly for life safety and building code compliance. These efforts will allow for better protection for the citizens we serve, and the Omaha Fire Department supports the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Gloria Osterberry, Co-Chair of the Housing Action Team of Omaha Together One Community. OTAC believes that at least four elements are necessary to keep people who are living in rental housing units safe. First, some mechanism which initiates a careful inspection of the rental property. First, some mechanism which initiates a careful inspection of the rental property. Second, enough qualified, trained housing inspectors to conduct inspections and re-inspections. Third, well-thought-out housing code, which protects residents without being overburdening to property owners. And four, a follow-up system which ensures that housing code violations are acted upon and repairs made by the property owners in a timely manner. As to the first element, a careful inspection of the property. For most properties in Omaha, we have a complaint-driven system. The city does not inspect unless someone complains. We've seen from the rooming house tragedy that poor and vulnerable people, also people who don't speak English well, or who don't know about the city codes, often never complain despite the dangerous conditions under which they're living. OTAC supports this ordinance because it initiates a registration and annual inspection of boarding and rooming houses in the city. It's needed because dozens of lives are at stake in these houses, which are subdivided into many units to maximize rental return. But OTAC knows that there are many single-family rental units and small apartments in Omaha that are in very poor, even dangerous condition. These units are never inspected unless the tenant or someone else complains to Omaha's Housing Code Enforcement Office. Then the tenant or someone else has to be there to let the inspector into the home in order to conduct the inspection. OTAC would like to see the city adopt a registration and regular inspection ordinance for more than boarding and rooming houses. OTAC believes you could begin this process by requiring registration and inspection of rental properties owned by those landlords who have a history of ongoing and multiple housing code violations. We don't want to burden the landlords who follow housing codes, but we also don't want to continue giving the irresponsible landlords free license to violate housing codes and risk losing more lives. As to the second element, enough qualified housing inspectors to conduct inspections and re-inspections, OTAC has serious concerns that the city continues to be understaffed. There are currently only eight housing code inspectors. There are somewhere between 3,500 and 4,500 properties with outstanding code violations. This would include privately owned, owner-occupied residences. During the upcoming budget process, OTAC believes that the City Council must clearly establish the number of housing code inspectors needed to adequately enforce our housing codes. We've been told by Mr. Davis that new technology, better training, and a new system of sharing the inspection workload will make the existing inspectors more efficient and effective, and we hope so. But the proof is in the pudding. Are the eight inspectors able to conduct inspections and re-inspections in a timely manner? Are housing cases really being handled on the 30, 60, 90-day schedule that the City Council recently adopted? Are we dramatically reducing the backlog of outstanding code violations that are three, four, and five years old? Are we forcing the relatively small number of slum landlords to clean up their act in Omaha? We believe that housing code inspection in Omaha is moving in the right direction and that the ordinance before you is another positive step. OTAC supports this ordinance and recent improvements to our system of following up on code violations. Our concerns remain. How do we initiate inspections on more rental properties to assure the health and safety of renters? Do we have enough trained housing inspectors to do the job that's needed for the health and safety of our families? Thank you for considering these ideas offered by the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Team of Omaha Together One Community. Have a good day.
Thank you, Gloria. Other proponents today. Seeing none of the opponents.
My name is Julie Mireau. I live at 140 North 39th Street. And I am not here to talk about the rooming house, boarding house situations. I own Omaha's only bed and breakfast. I own Omaha's only bed and breakfast. So when I first heard about this particular ordinance through the media, I heard that it was going to affect bed and breakfast and Airbnb locations. And I thought, well, that puts us all into one big category and, and we're all in that together. We'll all go through the same kinds of inspections and processes. Now I read that the, the mayor and Councilman Festerson are pushing to have the Airbnbs taken out of that mix. And so this then would become, from my understanding, Article 11 would apply only to my business. And I have a couple of issues with that. The first is, I would question the legality of an ordinance that affects only one business, only one entity. I'm not sure. I, I, my limited research says that there may be a question of legality on that. But the bigger issue here is that there is no similarity between the business that I run and a boarding house or a rooming house. I rent seven guest rooms by the night. I am permitted to do so by the city. I am inspected by the Fire Department. The city inspects my boiler every year. I have the permits that are necessary. We just went through this with the city in December. Mr. Davis has been in my house. He knows how it's set up. He knows what the construction is. The Fire Department has a schematic of my house in their computers. They know every access point, every ingress, every egress, where the guest rooms are in relationship to those ingress and egress points. So my question is, why is my business being singled out to be licensed and regulated unless there are others coming down the road that I'm not aware of? And I would object to being put into that position as the only business of my kind. I am more similar to an Airbnb than I am to a boarding house.
Okay. Thank you. Other opponents today.
My name is Molly Romero, 5101 Nicholas Street. And I have been unable to access the amendment. So I've only seen the original draft of the ordinance, and I am an Airbnb host. I live in the Dundee neighborhood. I've lived in the same house for 36 years. And I've had guests staying with me forever. I've had artists, storytellers, musicians, and I, I, it's something that I have done for years and I have enjoyed doing very much. Then when Airbnb made it possible for me to access even more visitors, I signed up. As I say, I don't know what the amendment is, but if it were to go as written, I would be limited to 30 days a year. And this year already, I think I've had guests for 70. You know, I currently have a guest who's a fourth-year medical student. She's 26 years old. She's doing a rotation at Clarkson Hospital, and she will be with me for a month. And last month, I had a fourth-year medical student staying with me who was doing a rotation down at Creighton. I had another guest who was with me for a week, and she was visiting Omaha because her cousin had had a severe stroke. And she spent all day, every day with him in rehab. And then she would come home at night and we would sort of decompress together and maybe go out to dinner together. It's something that I, I love to do, and I can't see any similarity between what I do and what these rooming houses and boarding houses are doing. I haven't had an inspector in my house, other than my regular heating and cooling guy, and, but I do have everything updated. And I keep my houses safe for me and for anybody in it as I possibly can. I might also say that if it were to go through as originally proposed, I think I would be $800 in the hole, just on getting initial certificate of occupancy licenses, 300-foot search, a 24-hour-a-day monitored fire alarm, in order to get about $450. So it would literally make it impossible for me to do this unless I could just go on and say, I'll do Airbnb for free, which they won't let me do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing for now. And I'll take the first shot at some questions. I think there'll be several more, judging by, judging by our conversation this morning and pre-council. But because I said, I requested the amendment of the whole, I'll kind of talk about what that does a little bit, and maybe have some questions for Mr. Davis as a follow-up. So I think the boarding house registration portion of this ordinance and the public safety measures we discussed are clearly needed. The recent tragedy and examples throughout the city where minimal living standards aren't being met, I think are a clear example of that. The photo Mr. Davis just shared, we also reviewed in Public Safety Committee. And that's a very powerful photo, particularly when you see the inside photos, which I don't think you showed up here, but were very concerning to all of us that day. So I'm very supportive of what that, what that does and moving that forward as soon as we can. That concern grows a little bit, however, the, however, when we start applying similar standards to some of these other categories, believing that we need to prioritize public safety, but not over-regulate areas of less concern. So that's really where the amendment request came from in the respect that it'll clarify two things. First being that it does not apply to single-family residential renting situations where somebody may have a single-family home they own and rents to maybe one or two people, which is currently allowed under current code. And I don't think it was our intention to place these standards on such a situation, but just felt we needed to clarify that situation in the ordinance, because I had some constituents read it and get pretty concerned about it not being expressly in there. Because current, current code says that's possible as long as you're meeting the basic code standards and you have not more than three people, three unrelated people living in one location. So the first part of this amendment just seeks to, to clarify that that is not what we're trying to get at here, nor is that impacted here. Now, we did have some conversation this morning about, is that the right language to have to get that accomplished? And I'm open to, if there's better language to do that, as well as language that might get to addressing a situation where people aren't in compliance with that and should be, that I know is one of Councilman Jerem's interests, and I think he'll speak here next. But then the second part of this, of the amendment of the whole, is that it removes from the consideration the tourist rooming houses. So under the auspices, we don't want to discourage technology or innovation or entrepreneurship in the marketplace that's represented by tourist rooming houses that, for all intents and purposes, are, are defined as Airbnb operations or something, or similar company of that nature, where we have folks like Ms. Romero in single-family homes who are offering this service to occasional visitors to our city or, or students in our city, and I think are great ambassadors for our city in that respect. Another great example being the Berkshire Hathaway conference about to happen here that is using this service substantially, I think. In my mind, it's similar to the Uber and Lyft conversation we have been having and the legislature is having right now, in the respect that it's new technology, you don't want to discourage, and you want to welcome to a, to a city and a state. But there's a difference. Uber and Lyft are clearly out of compliance right now. We're trying to get them into compliance through state law to welcome them in that respect. But it's not clear. In fact, I don't think Airbnb is out of compliance. It's just, it's just that they don't fit very well into our current definitions of code or our standards or anything else. So I think it is wise to remove that entirely from this ordinance, to address as a separate issue and, and deal with that on a separate track if we need to. Mr. Arnold, I see you sent the audience, you wouldn't mind coming down. I just want to get your perspective on that, too. We've talked about this frequently, both because you're involved with the Uber and Lyft conversation, but also because you're, you're an incubator in talent technology, Straight Shot, and I know you're also involved in the Chamber of Commerce, if you would.
Yeah, Mr. President, Members of the Council. David Arnold, 2210 North 51st Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here today on behalf of the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce as a member of its Board Direct, of Directors, and also as a member of its Public Policy Committee. This issue came up to our attention first as a result of the World-Herald article where it addressed the tragedy. First off, the Chamber is very supportive of regulating the rooming houses, such as the one who led, that led to that incident. But we do see Airbnb as a separate issue for many of the reasons that Council President Festerson mentioned. Couple of quick differences that we see. It is a different audience with different resources. It is a trans, a transactional approach. It is a temporary interaction between two going parties. And then finally, the company itself has incentives for both sides of the agreement, the rentor and the rentee. They promote transparency and provide them with incentives to provide a high-quality interaction. Otherwise, they will be judged very publicly as not providing that. So we feel that the last thing we want to do is rush into over-regulating a new emerging technology. And that's really where my other hat comes into play. As Councilman Festerson mentioned, I run Straight Shot, which is an accelerator for early-stage technology companies. So once a year, we invest in and mentor early-stage tech businesses, ideally ones that are quote-unquote disruptive, and then have unique business models. As a member of the startup ecosystem, the last thing I think that we want is for the regulatory environment to be at such a place that it discourages or stifles innovations from getting off the ground. Airbnb has done great things in other cities. And I think with the heightened visibility of Warren and Berkshire endorsing this sort of technology, we want to make sure that it flourishes and is not stifled. So with that, I'll take any questions the council has.
And some cities do, some cities don't regulate at all. Some cities do regulate somewhat. Have you had any experience dealing with that or recommendations along those lines?
Yeah. So Airbnb currently puts the burden onto the host to make sure that they are in compliance with state or local ordinances, statutory ordinances. But they are very upfront. If you go to their website, it will say, if you're in Omaha, Nebraska, here are things to look out for. So in our assessment, the Chamber's assessment of the landscape across the nation, there are many cities that have addressed this, not to this level, not to the level of the original ordinance, far less burdensome, far less, especially, I guess, dealing with the physical attributes of the property. Other cities don't regulate at all and rely on the self-regulation and the transparency of the model itself to take care of that. So I guess what the public policy would, would promote or suggest is if a response is warranted or if a discussion needs to be had, that other cities are first studied and that we create something that's unique to Airbnb because the model, the patrons are all very unique from the, the rooming house situation.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps we can, we can access your expertise in that regard if this proceeds on a separate track.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Mr. Davis, just a couple of things for you, and then I think Councilman Jerem's next. So let's talk about resources a little bit as it applies to the boarding room situation. So I think we're, there's general agreement that needs to proceed. It is an important thing for public safety, and we appreciate the work you're doing on it. We know you spent a lot of time on it and other things recently. One thing I note is there's a five-day expectation. If somebody applies for, or is, an acceptance of an application, there's a five-day turnaround for the department in terms of inspections and, or, and certificate of occupancy. So regardless of whether this ordinance expands or not into other areas, if it's just the boarding houses, I think even that alone requires substantial new resources by the department in terms of inspectors that we've heard about today and, and other time-consuming efforts that we're committing to in this ordinance. So could you address what you think that needs to be in 2016 and if you had those resources committed to, to implement this if it's passed?
Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director. First of all, let me address the, the code enforcement or housing enforcement inspector issue. Correct, the council has given money over the years, and I apologize, allergies are killing me, but over the years, council has given money to add staff, and, and obviously that hasn't happened. So a part of my research during the lawsuit, which is a different issue, I understand, I had to look at our process and why our process didn't work, or why our process did work. And what we came up with was, it was very obvious that when, when inspections aren't being made in a timely manner because our record-keeping system didn't allow us to do that, we took and leveraged the Sella, a system that we already had in our, in our possession for, for permits and inspection, to do a lot of that legwork for us. It clarified the codes we work with, the codes we had to deal with, and how those were handled in, in a notice of violation form, which is completely different than it was a year ago. Okay? Let's talk about the building and permits and inspection side a little bit. Our inspectors last year did 24,000 building permits in the City of Omaha with an average of three inspections. I had four and a half inspectors last year due to an injury on the job. I've kind of stayed over the years. I, I've done what I've been asked to do and cut down and cut down and cut down, but that side of my division really has to increase. And so I've asked the mayor, and I'm going to be coming to council during the budget time, to increase that number of inspectors, because quite honestly, we're not doing our job properly.
And what's that number? Do you know yet?
The number? I'm, I'm going to ask for four, but I'm a dreamer sometimes, so. Four in each of my divisions. I have actually four divisions up there. Plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and building, and, and all of those need to, to go there.
So potentially 16 new inspectors.
Correct.
Is there a ballpark cost for that?
Don't have it off the top of my head right now, but I can get that for you. Okay. Don't have it off the top of my head right now, but I can get that for you. So but as we stand right now, fortunately, I've been able to hire another inspector, which brings me up to almost a pretty decent staff we can work with. So to answer your question, the certificate of occupancy inspection is then put into our system that we currently have for the building inspection division, and that's how that permit is handled. It's scheduled into their daily work, just like it has been since 2006. That's treated like a footing inspection for them, or in other words, it's a timed inspection. They have to be there that day between a certain time. So workload-wise, it's really no different than doing an apartment building for us. It's scheduled into their system, and they handle it that way, and that's why I put the five days in there. That gives us that five-day envelope we have to work with that we work with right now on the certificate of occupancy. So our inspection process, the fire department's probably going to change them a little bit, but we're working with them on a Sella as well right now, so that we're working together through that process. They'll have the same scheduling possibility, or the same scheduling program that we currently have, they will also have in the near future.
And do you feel if this is passed, you do have the commitment for 16 new inspectors in the budget process?
I can't, I've asked for that. Again, like I said, I'm kind of wishfully thinking a little bit. I'm assuming I'm probably going to get down to two range, which is perfect because then we can manage that as well in our off-season.
Two per area?
Yes.
So that'd be eight?
Eight, yeah, eight inspectors versus 16.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that my funding source actually comes from the permits and inspection, or permits that we issue. That's my primary source of funding, even though it goes through general fund. The building community has a certain expectation that we have to meet as well, and that's where that funding comes from.
Okay. That's certainly something I think we'll want to know and be assured of before voting. Next topic, and then we'll move on. So the topic of beds and breakfasts came up.
Yes.
And could you address that a little bit? I think there is some unique provisions to that type of operation in here in terms of flexibility or how, what standards might apply that don't apply to other categories? Could you expand upon that?
Well, the bed and breakfast, and Ms. Mero is correct, she has the only one in Omaha that is legal. And I'm going to stop right at that conversation.
Only one, only one that's operating as she should?
Absolutely. And I did go through her property earlier, or late last year, earlier this year. I've kind of lost track of time here. There are certain features in that structure when it was built that allowed to comply for certain exemptions in the building code. In other words, the fire sprinkler in this particular building is not required, but an alarm system is. She has that alarm system in place. It's a commercial alarm system, and because of that, she's allowed to operate, and her certificate of occupancy allows her to operate as a bed and breakfast. The difference is, and I'm going to be kind of clear about something here on the Airbnb, which I know we've taken out, the ordinance that I gave you is Madison, Wisconsin's. I did not write that by myself. Madison, Wisconsin, is going through the same thing that we are. They're getting the Airbnb suddenly coming in. It's not that we don't want them. It's not that we don't like them. But there's a certain level of safety that people expect when they come to us, and we don't know that unless we can go look at it to make sure the homeowner's protected and the individual running the property is protected. That's all we're looking for. We don't want a boarding house situation to occur in a single-family property that's probably well-maintained, except nobody changes the batteries in smoke detectors. Maybe the smoke detectors weren't required. That's what we're looking for in those properties. But again, that's off the side right now. But I wanted to clarify that because there are other communities that have much stringent standards than we do, including fire sprinklers in those type of properties. We did not go there and didn't even start to go there.
Right. So part of how you're defining it is it operates expressly as a hotel operation?
Some do. Some operate, owners, people own a property or even an apartment or condominium, and they don't even stay there, they don't live there, they run it all the time. That becomes a secondary rental property, which is under the commercial, well, if it's an apartment building, it's a different issue anyway because the commercial code already covers that. The building is most likely sprinkled into fire detection systems in play. It's a single-family residences or the duplexes or townhomes that we don't always know what year they were built under and what safety features they have in the home for safety at that point.
And isn't the current ordinance, the amendment of the whole does say if you're currently operating as a bed and breakfast, you aren't subject to this fire sprinkler situation going forward, right?
That's correct.
Only new ones would be.
That's correct. And they fall under a different category in the building code anyway.
So what about historic structures? Just using the cornerstone as an example, since we're talking about that in our testimony today. Beautiful building. I'm not sure the landmark status of that, but there is flexibility for such beautiful buildings, right?
Right. As I stated this morning, there's a fine line based on who has the actual listing on the, whether it's the federal landmarks or whether it's state or local. But the federal law has made it very clear that life safety issues cannot trump the historical process, or historical process cannot trump life safety issues. So if there has to be a sprinkler system put in, there's got to be ways found to put it in that don't destroy the character of the building. And in the case of the cornerstone currently, that's not an issue for us because of how the building's built. It's actually built in what we refer to as a type-one construction. It's all concrete, doesn't burn. Only the finishes burn. And so because of that, the sprinkler system is not necessarily a requirement in that building as it sits now. A new one, yes, it would be.
Okay. So in situations like this, you'd have some flexibility as the planning department operates?
Right.
Okay. That's enough for me for now. Mr. Jerem.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for those questions. And if you would not wander too far, Mr. Davis.
May I wander there or wander to here?
You can just sit down. Julie won't bite you, I promise you.
I never have to bite.
At the outset, this is something we, I think, should take a step back and remember what it is that started this process. And that was the deaths, the preventable deaths of Demetria Sanchez and Eddie Valentine. And for me, there's, you know, we keep hearing from our mayor about the number-one responsibility of the elected officials in the city or the public safety of its citizens. Number one, trumps everything. And the life safety issues that have been exposed by this incident and these preventable deaths have my full attention. They have very full attention of our fire chief and his staff, who has taken the time throughout this process to personally engage on this issue, to assign members of his command team to this issue, and is to be commended for that. Because these things invariably involve challenges and opposition in different forms when you're trying to address life safety issues that can then be classified as overregulation. It's not anyone's goal to burden anyone else unnecessarily, but when you're dealing with the number-one responsibility of government, and that is the life safety of its citizens, I think that trumps. Now, having said that, I couldn't agree more with you, Mr. President, that this emerging technology of the bed and breakfast through Airbnb, a facilitator, is an emerging technology, was not a part of what we originally intended to address in these rental arrangements with, that are essentially transient boarding facilities for many people in places that weren't designed for them. I do think it's a conversation for another day, what, if anything, we should do, how it should be done. But that, I think, is a longer-term conversation and where we can look at what other cities are doing and learn from their experiences. And as we've heard many times, we don't want to be the first one, and we want to kind of see what works well elsewhere and has struck that balance between fulfilling the city's number-one obligation of life safety versus encouraging innovation in technology and opportunity. So that part I fully intend on supporting and hope the conversation can continue. But then I got thinking about the other part of the proposed amendment of the whole. And I would note that the amendment of the whole did remove the definition of the bed and breakfast in the most recent iteration. So to me, it's being stricken would or should at least give Ms. Mero some comfort that that's for another day. But I'll get to the Q and A with you in a second, Mr. Davis. Over the lunch hour, I attended a very interesting seminar, but my mind wandered, and it wandered over wondering whether part of the problem of the Second Amendment to exempt single-family residential houses would undermine the efforts that brought us here today. And that could very well happen, that a loophole, the size of which you could drive a Mack truck through, could occur. And possibly a way to close the loophole would be to just strike the language that brings this exemption invoking Chapter 55, so that the house, the example that you put up on the screen, which is single-family residential, might not be a loophole. And if you look at the one where these deaths occurred, and I wrote this dress down here, 4805 South 22nd Street, that is, if you pull it up, a single-family residential, originally single-family structure, that currently sits in an area that's designated as general commercial. So I believe that it's a grant, what would be a grandfathered non-conforming use. And the owner, who we're trying to regulate through this process, if this part of the amendment were to pass, could then argue, thank you very much, you've exempted me. Or you could have the situation of the photo that we had on the screen make the same argument. So I thought maybe we just need to take it out of Chapter 55 and go about it in another way. So that's another part of you could be thinking about that for the Q and A. Another change that was made was to eliminate the requirement that each room within a structure would have to have its own individual egress window. That was in the prior version. It's not in the cleanup version. As I read it, I thought I saw you'd only have to have one now. So I'd like you to be thinking about that because it got me thinking about that place out in Millard that we previously discussed, because there was a person who has a business and below it, there's about five or six apartments. And one of the things the city said under existing code is each unit would have to have its own egress window. And then I thought, well, maybe now that wouldn't be the case. So a lot of what I'm asking goes to these unintended consequences. And Mr. Davis, if that is your cue to kind of come up to the microphone.
Jay Davis, City of Omaha. Sorry, I'm doing a little speed reading here, Councilman.
First, while you're speed reading, we can get to the one I just did about the egress windows. But what are your thoughts about in the proposed amendment of the whole in 43 Section 302 definitions? It's inserted this blah, 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 and Section 55-19 of this code in which three or less unrelated individuals reside shall be exempt from these provisions?
After thinking through that again, that provides a very large loophole. And the problem is, within 55, we have very limited enforcement capabilities. However, in this particular ordinance, we actually built in criminal violation on these for noncompliance. If I take that away and only use part of that and come back into a definition and say that if you have three or more under the boarding house definition or three or more unrelated individuals under the rooming house definition, clears that hole up for me. It takes Chapter 55 out of there. We would basically strike that back out again, get it out of these zoning ordinance and bring it into strictly the building code ordinance, so it becomes very enforceable. For me, that's the tool that I really need.
So let's talk about that zoning issue. We talked about it a little bit at pre-council, but the point there is, if I could summarize, is this. It's one of the more frequently recurring complaints that I get within this complaint-driven system that we have.
Yes.
But it caught the attention of the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance. It's been the subject of their meetings. And what they have is, I believe the most recent one I heard about was the Bemis Park Neighborhood Association had a landlord who, whose property he had acquired had been illegally converted for so long, he didn't even know he was violating the zoning and had marketed the property on his website as essentially perfect for the college kid rooming or boarding house. I forget the terms. And it was the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance that brought this one and said, this is how far this has progressed to the point where we now have people, the unaware landlord, property owner, who's advertising something that is non-conforming use, who then, once educated by the department, realized that he wasn't going to make the return on the investment that he had. But then what he did was decided to go completely the other direction, substantially bring the property back into compliance and had an investment which could then be marketed back to a single family or up to the three unrelated.
Correct.
Do you remember that, Kay?
I do. And it's interesting you bring that up because we are finding that once people find out that they're not illegal conversion, some of them actually are converting them back to single-family or duplexes they were originally built. And the good side of that is you probably do have a better investment than you think you do. But when they do that, they come into us and take the permits required to do that renovation work, we bring them into compliance with the current code as best we can with that structure, and it's just another step forward for us in doing the right thing.
But then we have the case, and this is from Gifford Park in the roughly 34th and California area where the call comes in, and it's the people who live to the, on either side, who say, something's happened near the first of last month that never happened before. There's nowhere to park anymore. And we approached the people about, well, what's going on here? This is a single-family house that you're renting, and there's 12 different people, there's eight different cars, there's license plates from different places, and they basically tell us to get lost. They try to contact the landlord, who they can't get a hold of. So you have then, at the store, the conversation, you know, they're shopping, and then it becomes known that they're not the same family. So you have a non-conforming use. It's basically, I don't know if it was small group living or that would be with those numbers, a large group living, but it's still a burden on the neighborhood. Then there's cars that park up on the yard, which is another problem for the neighborhood. So we have this zoning issue, which essentially is, I'm going to classify, in my opinion, toothless in terms of the ability of the government to enforce because of the consequences of nonconformance.
That is correct.
You also have the issue of the length of time, regardless of how many inspectors you have, to come up with the documentation necessary to establish the non-conforming use in violation of the zoning code.
That is also correct.
So whether you have 16 inspectors or four in that division, or whether you have eight inspectors with one in that division, the problem's the same in terms of what you and the city's code enforcement and zoning enforcement people require is you expect and ask the neighborhoods to come up with a lot of the documentation on your behalf before you'll even open an investigation.
Right.
So here's another unintended consequence.
Correct.
You have a documented problem. Midtown Neighborhood Alliance, 15 neighborhoods in Midtown prioritize this issue. Create a good landlord award that's inspired by this process that I talked about with the Bemis Park neighborhood. You have property south of Leavenworth, east of 480, same thing. And what happens is, is when you don't have consequences that will coerce compliance, then what happens is you have conditions that are allowed to exist that create these life safety problems that lead to what happened with Demetria and Eddie dying. And they don't seem so obvious when they start. And they don't seem so obvious when they start. They start with, "There's nowhere to park." That's where these things start. And right now, there's really not an efficient system, or enough coercive sanctions that are possibilities at the end, that gain compliance. And that's why this boarding room and, and boarding house, rooming house ordinance, to me, is so important, in that we take the time to go through these potential unintended consequences, before we start exempting out, save Airbnb, for now. Because we could create a loophole that essentially allowed the condition that we're trying to clean up, exist in the first place.
You are correct. And to go a step further on that, when we have a vehicle-on-the-grass complaint, we actually cross four different codes before we find one we can work with. Chapter 55, Chapter 18, Chapter 1, obviously, which is, tells us we can write them a citation, and I've got one more in here, but I apologize, I forgot what that was sitting on. So we're crossing basically four, three to four different ordinances, to get even something we can take to court. Now, with the new system we created, there is a beauty in this, because I went to David Smallheiser and the staff, and said, "What do we do to make these clean?" They told us what we did. That's how we helped create the new system. But when we're complaint-driven, and we pull up to a house, and we see eight cars in the front yard, and we go inside, and eight people tell us they're all related, and pull out driver's license with the same last name on it, what are we going to do? We can't go in and say, "Well, you're lying to us." We have to walk away from that, and then deal with the complaint as we move forward.
But even if they're unrelated?
True.
There's no David Smallheiser at the end of that chapter code, that has some sort of criminal penalty to coerce compliance?
That's correct.
So, just to kind of be respectful, because I sensed this morning that maybe my colleagues were thinking I went on a little too long. That they started sliding their chairs away from me.
You want to see a closer? We will.
But all seriousness, did I ask you to come up with some language, and did you, you gave me a copy, did you bring a copy for everybody?
I have additional copies, which I could give everybody.
So if we were to strike the second sentence of the proposed amendment as a whole, and just go down to the definition of boarding house, in the second line, after the word "four," add "three or more unrelated," tell me, in your view, whether that accomplishes or strikes a balance between the concerns that Mr. Festerson were trying to address, and these potential loopholes that I was talking about? And you have an extra one for Mr. Pratt, sir?
There may be an extra one in there, I might not have counted well. If not, I'll give you this one. But, the answer is yes. It takes it out of Chapter 55, and puts us into, in the boarding house definition, we're talking about a three or more unrelated transient or non-transient individuals. We do the same thing in the rooming house version as well. So what we're saying is, if there's three people living in that home, and it's being rented as a boarding house or a rooming house, that gives us the teeth to say then, "Okay, this is what you are." The question becomes, and I haven't run this by law yet, so I'll wait for Mr. Pratt to ask me how crazy I really am, but if we go into a single-family residential property, say in a neighborhood where we got four college kids living there, that would actually put them into a boarding house situation, unless one of those college students actually owned that property. And we have those.
So the situation we had this morning, it was one of the council members, who has someone he knows in his district, that has a son with a couple people
Right.
...living in a single-family residential.
Right.
Three unrelated.
Three unrelated.
They're okay, right?
Right.
That's existing use.
Good to go.
Good, good in the amendment?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So continue.
Okay.
Why do you use the number, I heard a whisper, why do you use the number three instead of four?
No particular reason, I could go to four. I mean, the building code doesn't affect me at three or four. It does affect me at five. But four, in this case, would be a-
Our four.
Well, no, within the building code, they talk about a definition for a number of people in the house, based on square footage. Three or four is a safe number, because almost all houses, including the small ones in the, the areas around Elmwood Park, for example, could all meet that requirement of square footage. Four is the upper end of that, but we could probably make that work without having to deal with other issues within the code itself.
So, as we go to next week, colleagues, I just asked that you think of these over, and I see Mr. Fanslaw back there, in the thinker's pose.
Oh, boy.
Is that, in your, the zoning, is that within your purview, David? Nodding his head. Would you come down for just a second?
Is he nod, is he nodding or sleeping?
He was nodding. Would you share with him your-
Yes. Actually, Dave and I share things quite nicely, so he's seen this earlier today, too.
Okay. So, does that, from the zoning perspective, address, or at least try to balance, what Mr. Festerson was apparently trying to do, with what the life-safety objectives of the city are with this, in terms of the unintended loophole we discussed before? Or is there still a loophole?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
And while you're thinking, I'm trying to show my colleagues, I'm not trying to be over-regulatory here, as perhaps the gist of what I was hearing this morning led me to think.
While he's thinking, can I answer another-
Yes.
-question for you? Okay. You talked about the, the one, egress and one window, under Section 43, 305, number H, addresses, it's still there. I got worried, I didn't see it at first either, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I had to, thought I did something wrong, so.
David, would you identify yourself?
Sure. Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, again. The way this is written, it would, it would kick it into something other than a single-family home, zoning-wise. So, I just, if you go three or more unrelated, it's no longer a single-family home, so, if that's what you were asking.
Okay. So, does that comport with what we were talking about?
Yes. So, we're getting away from that. Yes.
Okay. And then, from FIRE, Tim, do you want to come up? Just because I-
Can you call Omaha Fire Department?
Thank you. There was one last issue of a concern, is that perhaps what we would be doing here, somehow there would be unnecessary searches, but we've established it's still a complaint-driven system. There has to be either the owner of the property, or someone with the right to occupy the property, that gives the right to, or consent to the search, or inspection, we'll call it, within the area that is under that particular tenant's authority, or in the case, the owner of the whole property. But from your side of the equation, you're different. Your 911 call, there's an emergency that is responsible for generating your presence at the property. You don't have those same issues, right?
That is correct. Once they've dialed 911, they've essentially given us permission to enter their, their structure.
Okay. And that's whether it's to fire suppression, search and rescue of humans, you have a right to enter.
That is correct.
So to the extent that there may be still people who are listening, or constituents of people who may be contacting the council members here, we have answered the question with regard to how the inspection works outside of this boarding room house, which would then trigger an inspection process annually. And you were a part of that, and that's-
Correct.
-you addressed that before. But the second thing is, the 911 call, that gives you the right to go in anyway.
That is correct.
Okay, so, thank you. Well, is this ordinance perfect? No. Does it bring, does it, does it cover everybody? Is there room for improvement? Maybe. Should we talk about Airbnb? That's a conversation we should have. Whether they need to be regulated, and how they're to be regulated, that's the same question as Uber and Lyft. Legislature's decided, we should bring them Uber and Lifts within the Public Service Commission. There's a bill that's been prioritized by the Transportation Committee, that's on, that's on its way. It's too early, I think, with your business, Molly, we don't understand enough about it. We, we don't want to, you know, squelch innovation. The last issue I have is for Julie here. Jay, that was the question you were supposed to be thinking about, is, we removed, or you removed, in this amendment as a whole, this bed and breakfast from the definition.
We actually removed tourist rooming house. We did not remove bed and breakfast.
Well, in the draft, there's, there's been three drafts now, right? There's the confidential one, that it was this discussion one.
That was the original one, yes.
Then there was the draft, which was the introduced copy, right? It's a draft on it?
The draft should not have been introduced copy, no.
That's what, somehow, that's the one I got.
Oh, I apologize, that, no. Let me-
The one I was referring to had Section A, definition, bed and breakfast. Is that not in?
It's Article 10 or Article 11. Because what happened is, we actually separated it to Article 10 and Article 11. Article 10 is boarding and rooming houses only, Article 11 was bed and breakfast and tourist rooming houses.
Okay.
Or short-term rental, I guess we called it, yes.
So, in answer to Ms. Miro's questions, what say you, to her concerns?
She has-
I'm the only, bed and breakfast, I just went through the process, I have a monitored 24-hour, seven situation.
She has a current certificate of occupancy issued by the City of Omaha, that she is in compliance with current, with current code and fire regulations for the property, and she's allowed to continue to operate. She's in the correct zoning district. We've gone in, we've looked at it, she opened her doors, let us do an inspection voluntarily, and both us and the fire department, they do, actually, they do an annual inspection anyway. We feel that it meets compliance and requirements of the code that we need, the type of construction lent itself to do that. We're very comfortable with that one.
So, in conclusion, colleagues, I would say that if, if you were to ask, I would hazard a guess, if Demetria or Eddie's family was here. They would say that the amendment of the whole, or with the amendment to the amendment of the whole, we've made real progress here, addressing life-safety issues in Omaha, in living conditions that present serious risks of serious injury and death to our citizens. And so, I don't, didn't mean to be so passionate about this this morning, and if that intensity offended anyone, you certainly have my apologies. But I, I think this is such a serious matter, that, that's why I've been so passionate about it. So, if my advocacy got lost in that passion, then I'm sorry. But hopefully, between now and next week, you can think about this amendment to the amendment of the whole. If there's any questions, they can be answered, and we can get something across the finish line, that will make a real difference in the lives of people who live in our city, who really are in life circumstances that make them vulnerable, where they, they cannot advocate and defend themselves to improve their living conditions. We have a fire division committed to this, that supports this, and I think it's worth, worth pursuing.
Thank you. We have other lights. I want to ask one follow-up question, though. And I am open to the discussion about amending the amendment of the whole, in that respect. I think, for Green, Airbnb is separate, that gets removed. If there's a better way to address what you just described, without having to cite Chapter 55, I'm open to that, too. And I think what you just discussed is as much, is far superior to the owner-occupied discussion this morning, which I think was too expansive. But tell me, why, so I understand the rationale for not citing 55, and instead going with what you just handed out. But why would it say "three or more unrelated" versus "more than three"?
That's what happens when I try to throw something together in a real big hurry, to make it work the way I wanted it to sound. Really, in all honesty, I need to, to really evaluate the word I want to use in there. The point is, I want to take it away from 55, put it into "three unrelated individuals" in that environment. It kind of separates us away from the single-family property owner, who maybe have two spare bedrooms, and they have people stay there. Like the med students, I fully understand that, I fully get that. That's not the market we're looking for. We're trying to get to the properties that have conditions that look like this on the inside. You know, we don't want people to have these kind of conditions, where they're paying 400-plus dollars a month rent for a room that's divided by a sheet. And there's actually another photograph in it, that has extension cords running about 10 different directions. That's not what we want, that, that's the, that's the people we're, we're looking at. Because these probably are the most vulnerable people on the street, who aren't on the street, and, and they, they do the best they can with what they have. And to exploit that, and put them into an unsafe environment, where lives are obviously lost, we need to, to fix that. We also need to know where they are. As first responders, or ourselves, we don't know.
Right.
As the first picture I showed you, it's just a single-family house.
And that's a powerful, powerful visual, as to why something like this is needed. But to the specific question of what, why not stay consistent with what we've used in the past, which is "more than three," that's something you're open to, and may, in fact, recommend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Jay, so, the possibility of having more bed and breakfasts in Omaha is probably good, right?
Well, as a little case in point, a month ago, Airbnb had 234 properties listed, and as of yesterday, it had 300 and almost 400 properties listed. And it's growing almost weekly.
I meant the, the legal, the ones that are operating legally.
I'm sorry. The legal ones?
Yeah.
Unless they're in a historic district, which is in the zoning ordinance, the answer is probably no.
Okay, that's interesting.
And that's the only place they're allowed to be.
Did you say that Judy has some grandfathering rights, or did I not hear that right?
Julie, on the cornerstone?
For, yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Morrell?
Yes.
Would you describe, what do you mean by that?
Right. It's, hers has been a legal bed and breakfast, at least on our records, and I don't remember the date, and I apologize for that. But, 99? Thank you. 89? Oh, I gave you 10 years, sorry. It's been on, on our, to our knowledge, since 1989. The code in place at that time would allow it to remain without a sprinkler system, based on the type of construction, providing it had an alarm system, a monitored alarm system, which, which Julie's system does. So because of that, it's allowed to remain in that condition. If somebody goes in and does work to that, everything changes. But currently, she's allowed to remain in that use.
Without a sprinkler?
Correct.
Okay. And if I could just have Ms. Morrell come up, real quick?
Yes, sir.
You have to say your name again.
Julie Morrell.
Just so that I can underst, a point of clarification, were you, are you against this because you didn't know that you had grandfather rights? Or are you against it because you thought the rooming houses are getting away with murder? Not to be a pun on words here.
I don't, I'm not speaking to the rooming house part of it, I'm absolutely, I understand what you're doing there, I applaud it, I support it.
Uh-huh.
What I was objecting to was having a separate category created just for my business.
Uh-huh.
And my business alone. Since there aren't any other legal bed and breakfasts, there wouldn't be anyone else affected by that but me.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm already in compliance. So I don't understand why I would be singled out for additional licensing, additional regulation.
If, if at all possible, there's another way of looking at it, and you, you have to decide whether, you know, you want to look at it that way. But an alternative way of looking at it is that, some of these other guys are dragging your image down, and we're kind of separating and demarcating, so that you don't get the bad press or the bad shade.
No one confuses me with a boarding house. They're not ruining my image. We're two separate kinds of businesses.
Okay.
So I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I don't, that's not a concern to me, because no one thinks that we are a boarding house. No one thinks they're going to come in and give me $400, and for that, I'm going to let them live there for two months, in a room in the basement, separated by a sheet.
So if you were already doing, following the law-
Mm-hmm.
-and you're going to do, in the future, what you've already been doing-
Mm-hmm.
-I'm a little confused as to why you're upset. Because nothing is changing.
Well, I don't know if something's going to change. I mean, all I, I haven't seen the ordinance, I haven't seen the amendment. All I see is in the media, talking about bed and breakfasts are going to have to be licensed- licensed differently and regulated differently, and I don't know what that means.
Well, for the record, the record shows today that if you exist like you are now and don't make any changes, then you don't have any, you don't have any worries.
Then I'm all good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, just wanted to get a clarification on that.
Ms. Milton?
Well, and actually, mine's a follow-up, because I, I understand Julie's concerns, but what I, going back to that big loophole, I think that if we didn't include bed and breakfast, then what people would do is they would try and classify themselves as a bed and breakfast as opposed to a rooming house or boarding house.
But wouldn't they still be required to get a special use permit for that, though? Because I was required to.
You, you would, but I think that's the problem, is you'll get, you'll get lawyers that'll want to argue the definitions because they are so similar. And so, that's what I think people would end up trying to use, the fact that bed and breakfast aren't included, as a loophole to classify themselves as a bed and breakfast when really they're going to be kind of a boarding rooming house, because they're very similar. I understand, to you, you have such a wonderful place, and if somebody walks into your place and walks into a normal boarding, traditional boarding rooming house, huge difference. But I think what could happen is people will start calling themselves bed and breakfast, but they're going to be bed and breakfasts, not, not in the same way you are.
Okay, I understand.
That makes sense. So, I think we have, and I've thought about this over the last hour or so, and after, after Councilman Jerem talked about loopholes, I, I wanted to exclude the bed and breakfast until I started thinking about that would create a huge loophole, I think.
And I don't want that either.
And, and my concern is that initially, that you would have additional regulations, but it doesn't appear that you have any additional regulations. I did talk to Mr. Davis about that earlier. I assume she won't have to pay that application fee because she's already a registered bed and breakfast. So, that would be waived, she wouldn't incur any costs initially.
Well, there would be the license fee.
Jay, you want to come to the microphone?
Yeah, if you could.
I was thinking I could talk loud enough, but I realize it's a bad thing. Jay Davis, City Planning. She has to pay the license fee, in this case, because she's existing, we would most likely waive the requirements for the application fee because we already know she's there. Just the yearly reinspection fee is all she would need. And to kind of clarify this a little bit, you've heard me say a couple times that I know of one legal bed and breakfast in the City of Omaha. It's funny, I found out there may be several more and not too far from this one. So, we kind of use this as a way to flush things sometimes, when, especially now with our inter-agency response capability in this ordinance. A first responder crew can go in and say, you know, something doesn't look right here, and, and they take that up the chain of command, it gets both, back to both fire prevention and ourselves, and we get to look at this and say, you know what, you are operating something that's not allowed in this neighborhood, and that starts to flush a whole different series of, of issues out for us to look at. Every time we think we get smarter than, than individuals out there, they, they find a new way to cheat it. I hate the internet, to be honest with you, because there are so many ways that you can Google anything out there and find out ways to do things. So, we just need a place to start. You've heard me say before, I love businesses that do it legally in the right way. Julie would be in that category. But there are people out there competing against her, and I can see very clearly now, I hadn't thought about the loophole, you just said that, yeah, I'm now a bed and breakfast because I serve your breakfast in the room now.
Right.
That's, yeah.
That's exactly what I saw, in, in order to avoid the regulations of the boarding and rooming house, if we left out bed and breakfast, all of a sudden, everybody would be considering themselves a, a bed and breakfast.
Sadly, I say sometimes we have to think like criminals, and it's true, we, we actually do, because we've got to be smarter than them, so...
All right. So, thank you, I mean, I actually have decided, and I hope Ms. Morel, I, I hope you're somewhat satisfied with that response.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the fact that you have been doing, operating your business for so long and doing it legally.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
That was off microphone, right?
I have nothing further, Mr. President, thank you.
No, it's Jay, the city inspector, right? Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I, too, will make this short. And we don't want to mess up bed and breakfasts, because I travel the United States going to all kinds of different bed and breakfasts, and I tell you, that's where you really meet the people. And what I think is ironic, I come from a, a small town of 1,200, and there are two bed and breakfasts in that small town. What I want is not to have, as I said this morning, not a feel-good concept going here. So, I appreciate the energy that you're putting into this and the, the need of something like this. But I also do not want to take away the creativity that some individuals are using out there to make this, the little niche that I think Molly's using. I think we, we have to careful that we don't interfere with that. The question, Jay, could you come up here just a second? The question I have, I heard earlier, you said we're going after the minimum, these are the minimum standards.
Correct.
Is what you're, what you're putting, you're saying minimum.
Yes.
So, if we're arguing about overregulating, you're saying we're not because we're going after minimum standards?
I, Jay Davis, City, City Planning, I, I heard a phrase the other day from somebody, but I'm, I'm going to actually plagiarize it a little bit here. This is the least expensive building you can legally build, and that's what the building codes allow us to do. Now, when we go after minimum code standards, we have to realize that there's a certain element of life safety that's, that's provided through that, smoke detectors, egress windows, doors, all the things that we need to maintain that structure in a safe condition. And to be really honest with you, 20 minutes is all the code requires us to maintain in any building. 20 minutes to get you out of here, whether it's your house, whether it's this place, doesn't matter, 20 minutes. And so, to do that, there's just certain minimum standards that have been established, and we use through the International Code Council, who writes the code for us. That's how we get from point A to point B. Where we sometimes have to get more stringent is when it doesn't fit the shoebox of the code. We have to maybe look at this and say, okay, we've got 18 rooms in here, and they're divided up by a piece of plywood. That's not going to work, we're going to bring you back into that minimum standard, and that's the reason why we've written the ordinance this way.
Okay. And you said you need additional inspectors, which I can understand why. But another thing, it caught my attention, you said, now, how are these being paid? Are they being paid by the amount that we're collecting from the permits and rules?
Correct.
Or is it taxpayer dollar?
No, the, the fees that I've established within, within here for your initial inspection and the yearly inspection, that's based on one of our inspectors and one of the fire inspectors, what our minimal cost is, plus our staff time, which we're, and some I'm probably going to lose a little bit, others, we're going to be right at the ragged edge, but we'll, we'll cover that over the course of time. It kind of works itself out, even on permits, it's that way now.
Okay, so you're saying basically, the new inspectors will be...
Permit-funded. It all goes to general fund, it's very complicated.
I understand going to general fund, but I'm just saying is, this dollar actually is paying for this inspector?
That's correct.
Because I do think some of the fees personally are pretty high, but you're saying that is to pay for that salary or whatever?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what that does is, because the fire department's going to have people involved, and we're going to have people involved, and we'll have clerical staff on both sides involved, we've taken all that into account with the factor that we use and, and came to those numbers. Like I said, some cases were a little low, some cases were a little...
Yeah, right.
But it averages.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know about my colleagues, but I have not recovered from this morning's pre-council meeting yet. This is a lot of information that's been generated since this morning. And since I haven't recovered, I have serious concerns that my constituents can have a chance to grasp all of this and have a chance to respond in a week. So, I, I would ask my colleagues to consider a two-week layover on this, so we don't have our phones ringing off the hook, because we all said, if we're going to do this, let's do it right and get that input. And for the last week and a half, and this, and it started again this morning, and it's been mentioned this afternoon, my district, South Omaha, South Omaha, South Omaha, South Omaha. That's why I waited till last to speak here. Yeah, we've lost two of our citizens. And, yeah, I was, I was there that night. Jay and I had a lengthy discussion. And what got, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, that they knew that there was something wrong with our system, and it needed to be addressed, and they started working on it right away. That night, in fact. And here we are today. And I think that's what the families expect, is what, especially the families of those that we lost in South Omaha. And I know our citizens across from boundary to boundary want us to do the best that we possibly can. But as my colleague to the right has mentioned, is one size fit all? Probably not. But should we make that attempt? Should we take that extra 33 seconds to look at something a little bit more? Your legs got to be killing, Jay, you've even mentioned here today, at least three times that I heard, that you had to do this in a hurry, or you had a limited amount of time to get something down to us, or I had to grab this real quick. Okay. Slow down a little bit. Let's take some time to digest this and get it close to right as possible. In conclusion, I would just like to say again, Chief Kanger, thank you and your department for what you do. I know there are citizens out there that say, well, they get paid to do that. Well, I, for one, I went through your black box drill a number of years ago, and that is scary as heck. So, knowing what those firefighters went into that house that was filled with smoke on 22nd Street in South Omaha, yeah, they have the training, they went in, did the best. Thank you for what you and your department does, and I think we forgot to mention one other thing, and that was the American Red Cross. They were there that night, too, doing what they do best, and they deserve thanks as well. And I know, they, they, they take a breather, they step back and look, and I think that's what we ought to do here, so I would ask my colleagues to consider that, that extra week. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make it in the form of a motion, layover for two weeks.
Two weeks to the 21st? Motion in a second?
It's a motion to layover the third reading, two weeks to March 21st. March 21st?
April.
Or April 21st.
Now, for the lights, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Mr. President.
Yes.
58th, layover two weeks. Appeal, bid rejection out of 59. Mark Seven Enterprises appeals the rejection of their bid of March 4th for the Bob Carey Bridge Beat Stage project. Mark Santos had to leave, and he's requesting a one-week layover of that.
Roll call.
And continue the public hearing. Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Mr. President.
Yes.
59th, layover one week. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearing, gen. 60, shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing, gen. 61 through 63, shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 4:24.